Well, good evening again, everybody. Do apologize for some of the hiccups here, but glad that we are all still here together, and we will always find a way to make these items go forward. Actually, the people in the back have the snacks now, so they, they're the lucky ones, truly. So again, wanted to start over. My name is Brianna Carrier. I'm an assistant to the city manager. I work in the city manager's office, and I've been coordinating the city's ward redistricting process this year. So we're going to start once more, and also just a reminder for myself and also for any other public speakers to make sure that we're speaking slowly and clearly for our interpreters as well. So we will get started again. Starting once more with our agenda, this is the items that we will be covering tonight. We will be going over traditional redistricting principles, our draft map 2C, draft map 5B. We'll have public testimony following staff presentation, and then time for council comments and direction at the end. Our traditional redistricting principles, these are the principles that we are keeping in mind when deciding representation amongst our city wards. The wards must be relatively equal in size for people, not citizens. Contiguous districts should not hop or jump. They must maintain communities of interest. They must follow city and census designated place boundaries, and we must keep the wards compact, both in appearance and in function. Communities of interest was a new guideline that all jurisdictions needed to follow in California, following the Fair Maps Act of 2019. So communities of interest are the building blocks of our districts. A community of interest includes ethnic and language minorities and other groups. They are subjective, and they are meant to be as open-ended and inclusive as possible. Communities that are covered by the Voting Rights Act include Latinos, Asians, and African-Americans. While communities of interest may include race, it cannot be the predominant factor in drawing district boundaries. What is not a community of interest? The Fair Maps Act explicitly prohibits these groups from being considered as communities of interest. That includes political party affiliation, incumbents, and political candidates. It is also hard in redistricting to truly utilize groups of similarly minded people who do not share a similar geographic location or are citywide. This table here is a table of the city's process as a whole. Now, where we are is this green row. That's Wednesday, March 16th, our fifth public hearing and the first reading of our ordinances. Prior to this fifth public hearing, the city held our first public hearing in August of 2021 last summer. In the fall, we had redistricting partners come onboard to do the demographic data analysis piece for the city. In December, we had a staff-led online workshop following, and one, or following in January was the first time that we had our draft maps, starting with draft map A. We had additional draft maps drawn following that meeting, a staff-led workshop in February, a dedicated redistricting public hearing, being the third public hearing, Wednesday, February 23rd. We scheduled an additional public hearing, March 2nd. The row that says March 9th here is actually a date that was important as a reminder for us that all maps that are going to go to a council vote needed to be posted seven days prior. So for us, that was March 9th. The maps that are before you tonight were posted last Wednesday, March 9th, absent some corrections that needed to be made. Two more rows beyond this green one where we are here tonight include the next meeting, Wednesday, April 6th, also scheduled for 6:00 PM, and that would be the sixth public hearing and the final adoption, a second reading of ordinances. The last row here says Sunday, April 17th, 2022. Now, that here is just a technicality. The city has technically until the 17th, however, that is not a date that we are able to aim for at this time. That is just the legal date that we must have our maps adopted by. A quick summary of the two maps that are before you tonight. We have draft map 2C. This was a public submission, and it was forwarded with council revision. Those revisions include moving the area bound by south, or bound by Stein Road, Ming Avenue, Ash Road, and Stockdale Highway into Ward 6. Draft map 5B, also a public submission, but with council revisions. Those revisions include moving the boundary line along the river towards the western part of town between Wards 4 and 5, and to move the square that comes south from Ward 3 to Ward 2 up and make the square part of Ward 2. So those revisions were made, and those are the maps that are before you tonight. So this map is the current city ward map compared to draft plan 2C. One more time. And draft plan 2C. I would like to note, at least for these two publicly submitted maps, that they are also both within a legal deviation under 10%. For plan 2C, their deviation between the highest populated ward and lowest populated is 8.2%. For 5B, it is 9.1%. This would be the new Ward 1. Ward 2. Ward 3. Ward 5. Ward 6. And Ward 7. Again, this information is also available on the city's website. These are the first two links on the website if you are interested in zeroing in or zooming in on some of our tables that we have here. So that is draft plan 2C. We'll move now to draft plan 5B. Once again, these are the existing wards. This is draft plan 5B. Once more. So we'll move into each individual ward. This would be Ward 1. Ward 2. Ward 3. Ward 4. Ward 5. Ward 6. And finally, Ward 7. Just towards the end of the presentation here, wanted to give one last summary slide where you can see the differences between the two proposed maps. So once more, this is draft plan 2C. Draft plan 5B. And a very quick snapshot of both draft maps side by side. And another reminder that all of the information is on the city's website. This is underneath the city clerk's webpage. So if you go to the city clerk, you will find ward redistricting, and you can find the same information. We're moving lastly to staff recommendation before we move to the public hearing portion. Staff recommends council move forward with first reading of ward boundary ordinances for both ward maps 2C and 5B. And so that concludes my presentation, unless there's any other comments from staff or city manager. Prior to starting the public hearing, we did want to give an opportunity for our interpreters to just give instruction to those who may need interpreting services for their public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Carrier. And at this time, I will open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, do we have any speaker cards?
Mayor Go, we have received 30 speaker cards for this item.
Thank you. Now is the time for those who wish to speak in opposition of map 2C. So Madam Clerk, just to expedite this, if you can just call the first speaker and then say the second one after that so that that person can be prepared. And just a reminder to everyone, two minutes, please, and just watch the time. Madam Clerk, please call the first speaker. And this is opposition of map 2C.
Mayor Go, we have 10 speakers in opposition to map 2C. The first speaker, Rupsi Bajwa. Second speaker, Harveen Kar.
And just a reminder, just move the mic to your level so that we can hear you.
Hello, respected city council and mayor. My name is Rupsi Bajwa. I teach 9th grade and ELD at Ridgeview High School. I'm also a proud graduate of Ridgeview High School. I made an important decision to stay in this community that raised me so I could support and pour love into my students who feel at home both at Ridgeview and surrounding areas. This is the reason we are against 2C. Map 2C divides our proud Punjabi community because I wanted to care, sorry, I stayed to teach in this community because I wanted to carry on that feeling of belonging and community with generations to come. Students share their frustrations, ambitions, and inspirations with me every day. So many students share how I'm the first teacher they've ever had the looks that looks like them, sorry, whose name sounds like them from their schools to their walkable places of worship. The youth and generations to come deserve the wholesome feeling of community. I hope you'll keep communities in their natural form and vote for map 5B, not 2C. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Harveen Kar, followed by Manpreet Kar.
Welcome.
Hi. Vai Grudhika Kalsa, Vai Grudhiki Fateh. Good evening, members of the council and my beloved Sangath and community members. My name is Harveen Kar, and I am a lifelong East Side resident of Bakersfield. Specifically, I must share my reasons against map 2C. As a Ward 1 resident, map 5B keeps the population variance balanced, diverse, and in addition, keeps the more of the area east of the 99 included, contrary to the 99, or contrary to the map 2C, which has a lack of population variance. In fact, 2C seems to artificially pack communities into Ward 1 and inflate the numbers. Although the East Side has always been my home, my heart lies elsewhere in Bakersfield as well. I was born at Mercy Southwest Hospital to my loving parents, Bob and Vicky, and from the moment I was born, I was surrounded by community. Friends and family flooded the hospital room after my birth to visit, and can you all guess where they took me first after I was born? It was not home, but a gordwara, one of the local gordwaras, a sick place of worship on the southwest side of town. Naturally, after spending countless Sundays at our gordwaras, I, the southwest side of town, became home as well, a place where I can knock on any Punjabi's door and always be offered a cup of chaw or tea without even personally knowing them, strangers who feel like family, as you can all see in the lobby, so feel free to grab that cup, too. As you look around the room today, my heart, or as I look around the room today, my heart is filled with warmth and love for our community. I mean, wow, what a turnout, right? This is the power of Sangath. This is the power of community. We stand united because we know that we, and we know and understand the power of Ikta, unity. We know that we are stronger together, not apart, which I, which is why I'm calling on our city council members to vote for map 5B, not 2C. Vote for a stronger and better Bakersfield, a Bakersfield where we stand together and embrace our collective power, not our differences. Map 5B is the best way forward. Thank you for your time and good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Kar. Just a reminder. Just a reminder, I know that you are very passionate about this, but in the council meeting, we don't allow clapping during this time because it disrupts our meeting. So thank you for being very respectful, and now we'll move on. Welcome, Ms. Kar.
Hi. Welcome to my Sangath. First, I'll greet them. Vai Grudhika Kalsa, Vai Grudhiki Fateh. My name is Manpreet Kar, and I'm a lifelong member of this community, a Bakersfield resident since my parents decided to make Bakersfield home. And for my entire life, I've called it, and, and something has always drawn me back to Bakersfield, no matter how far I try to go. I've gone to school with and served on student body councils with some of the children of our esteemed council members as well. But tonight, I'm here to share why I'm against map 2C. Chief is that communities of interest are split and separated, which goes against the spirit of redistricting. Many of these were explicitly commented against in the letter by the Chamber of Commerce even, and some of my reasons including, include pairing communities that are unalike, including the communities in Quail Road with Ward 2 and downtown communities. When the choice of Ward 6 is far more natural and explicitly stated even by the Chamber of Commerce, Quail Road is far more similar to the nearby Stockdale Estates than communities in East Bakersfield even. There are far too many reasons to name, but for these reasons that I've explicitly stated, I stand against map 2C. Thank you for your time. Vai Grudhika Kalsa, Vai Grudhiki Fateh.
Thank you, Ms. Kar. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Deep Singh. Following that, Camila Chavez. And following that, Cecilia Castro.
Welcome, Mr. Singh.
Good evening to the Honorable Mayor, to the Honorable City Council members, to, to the Bakersfield staff, and of course, to the community residents far and wide that came. Vai Grudhika Kalsa, Vai Grudhiki Fateh. My name is Nandip Singh, and I'm the Executive Director of the Jaggar Movement. I didn't actually come here to really speak against 2C, but I feel compelled to, to just share some concerns about that specific configuration. As you've heard earlier, families in East Bakersfield take pride in their communities, but in map 2C, Ward 1 is encroaching upon Ward 7, oftentimes dividing the Punjabi community, as you'll hear from tonight, but also taking away from Ward 1 communities as well. In addition, while many have called for the river to be the natural border in the West, map 2C jumps around the border on both sides of the river, explicitly going against Council Member Bob Smith's directives. And finally, in the North, map 2C goes against best mapping practices by linking the Norris River Lakes with Ward 3, connecting by, connecting by unpopulated canals and oil fields instead of populated regions. Finally, Council Member Friedman had expressed concerns about the lack of growth areas in Ward 6, but map 2C exacerbates this by overpopulating Ward 6 and underpopulating Wards 3 and 5. This packing of communities into Ward 3 is especially concerning. For these and many other reasons, I must oppose Ward 2C. You, you obviously see there's huge amounts of support for map 5B. They're going to get an opportunity to share, but I do just want to say, if, if in my remaining time, if you're in support of 5B, can I ask you just to stand? There's no clapping.
Please go ahead and stand.
And I, and I see the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Singh. And now the next speaker, please. Ms. Chavez.
Following Ms. Chavez, it will be Cecilia Castro.
Welcome, Ms. Chavez.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I'm Camila Chavez, Executive Director of the Dolores Huerta Foundation, DHF. We have always taken the position, and the demographic analysis confirms, that Bakersfield must draw three to four Latino Voting Rights Act wards, and that the Black and Punjabi communities can be protected by keeping them as whole as possible, as much within those Latino Voting Rights Act wards. You now have seen six proposed maps that accomplish both tasks easily. If you adopt 2C, a map that only draws two Latino Voting Rights Act districts, you will be sued. The Ward 3 configuration in map 2C has contiguity and compactness issues in addition to diluting the Latino vote. Strong legal precedent was set in the Luna case when Kern County tried to do the same thing as map 2C, which makes it very unlikely that Bakersfield will prevail when the county did not. Now we have even more reason to believe that this is true. Tomorrow, new citizen voting age population C-VAP data will be released. By all accounts, the number of eligible Latino voters will be even higher than it is now. That means that with the new C-VAP data, it will be even easier to draw four Voting Rights Act districts in Wards 1, 2, 6, and 7. If 2C is adopted, Bakersfield will be sued, and DHF will demand four Latino Voting Rights Act wards to be drawn using the new C-VAP data. Four seats represents a majority of this council. We are disappointed that the unity map was not advanced from its, in its March 4th form, but will accept 5B as an appropriate compromise. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chavez. Next speaker, please.
Cecilia Castro, followed by Ashley De La Rosa. Following that, Gabby Fernandez.
Welcome.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Cecilia Castro. I'm the Deputy Director of the Dolores Huerta Foundation and also a longtime resident of Bakersfield City. And today, I'm actually reading a letter on behalf of the Law Offices of Mellow and Sarsfield LLP, and I also just wanted to mention that ACLU and Maldef have also submitted, submitted letters for public comment. Dear council members, the Law Offices of Mellow and Sarsfield represent a group of concerned citizens and voters that reside within the city of Bakersfield. We are a Voting Rights and Civil Rights Law Office. On behalf of our clients, we urge you to adopt a voting boundary map that provides a maximum opportunity for community groups, minority groups, to elect members to the city council. For decades, minority voters have been locked out of elective office in the city of Bakersfield and Kern County. Only in the last few years has this begun to change. The new census gives the city a historic chance to correct those past wrongs. We strongly urge you to adopt a truly fair and representative map. We stand ready to work with the city to develop a fair map. Of course, we are also prepared to vindicate our clients' rights in courts if necessary. Sincerely, Law Offices of Mellow and Sarsfield LLP. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Castro. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Ashley De La Rosa, followed by Gabby Fernandez, and then Laura Cruz.
Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Ashley De La Rosa. I am the Education Policy Director for the Dolores Huerta Foundation. Throughout this time and before the census, we have empowered community members in the redistricting process to create and support maps at all levels of government that help them and their families and their communities. Our families have been very successful in the, in the Bakersfield City School District, State Assembly, Senate, and Congressional Districts, and Tularay County Board of Supervisors. In the city of Bakersfield, however, these community members created a map that did not advance in the process because of city of council members championing what is now map 2C and preserving their own interests and those of higher income, predominantly white residents, at the expense of low-income residents and the classes of people protected by the Voting Rights Act. Map 2C disenfranchises protected people by splitting African-American voting blocks between four wards, Punjabi between four, and Latino spread all over seven wards. Map 2C, 2C's Ward 3 is particularly bad. Ward 3 is gerrymandered by using filler lands of inhabited oil fields, riparian areas, and a super narrow strip of 112-foot-wide canal overpass along Coffee Road to enforce East Bakersfield's communities into the same district as Norris and Fruitvale. The Norris-Fruitvale portion of Ward 3 outpopulates the eastern portion and about 17,000 people. And of those 17,000 people, only 1 in 3 are Latino. This is the reason why City Council Member Ken Weir has been able to keep the ward seat for over 15 years. It is time for change, and Bakersfield has an obligation to ensure that the voting power of protected classes are not diluted like this. I urge the council to reject map 2C and adopt a map that draws at least three Voting Rights Act districts. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fernandez. Madam Clerk? Next speaker, please.
Gabby Fernandez, followed by Laura Cruz.
Hello.
Welcome.
Hi. Hello, my name is Gabriela Fernandez. I work with the youth program at the Dolores Huerta Foundation. Before I even submit my public comment, I would like to say that working with young people, we do like to teach them the process, and I think after seeing all the turnout that we had today, we have so many community members, we have people in the lobby, and I just think, just teaching young people this process of redistricting, a lot of the time we teach them that it is so important to use their voice, that it really matters to come out and talk to folks. One of the things that I would like to say is that I would like to teach the youth that the, that this is, that this process does take community input, and I would like everyone to really take, listen to this community and listen to everybody just coming together because from the beginning of the process, you all have received letters from organizations like ACLU, Maldef, Common Cause, and DHF outlining your obligations in the redistricting process. But however, we come to two maps that we can't really get behind, so please, I really urge you to reject map 2C and to adopt 5B. I think it would be a great compromise for our communities. Thank you very much, and I hope you have a great evening.
Thank you, Ms. Fernandez. Next speaker, please.
Laura Cruz, followed by Julia Gomez.
Welcome.
Buenas tardes a todos.
Oh, okay. Can we have a, an interpreter, please? Spanish language interpreter. Just one minute.
Yeah, we'll do that, mayor.
Yeah, why don't we just switch order for right now, and we'll just, oh.
Do you want me to translate for her?
Our translator's on their way.
My name is Laura Cruz, and I am here to ask you to adopt map 5B, and that would be all. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Cruz. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, members of the city council and Mayor Go. My name is Julia Gomez, and I'm a staff attorney at the ACLU of Southern California, and we sent a letter to the council yesterday, and we've sent a number of letters to the council reminding you of your obligations. I really want to emphasize the fact that the Fair Maps Act was passed precisely to address maps that look like the 2011 map, that create extremely non-compact, almost non-contiguous districts. The fact that map 2C has advanced so far shows the disregard by some to the Fair Maps Act, and I'll just go ahead and outline some of the many ways that the map violates the Fair Maps Act. First, like the existing map, map 2C breaks up the Punjabi Sikh community into four districts. And why does it do this? It does this to be able to maintain the two northern districts that have a very odd snake-like Wards 3 and 4 violate the compactness requirement because they bypass nearby areas of population in, in favor of more distant areas of population. So again, we really, really urge you to take the Fair Maps Act seriously. These criterias were discretionary in 2011. They are no longer discretionary. I quickly just want to flag that you also have obligations under the Federal Voting Rights Act, and here we have a case where a plaintiff would be easily able to meet the three jingles preconditions. It is possible to create a third Latino-majority district. The Kern County case shows that there is RPV in, in Kern County and likely in Bakersfield, and totality of the circumstances evidence will show, as evidence show in Kern County, that Latinos have faced discrimination in Kern County, and a lot of the evidence that we adduced in the Kern County case was evidence of discrimination in Bakersfield. So we really, really urge you to reject map 2C, not only because it violates the Fair Maps Act, but because it very likely violates the Voting Rights Act. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gomez. Madam Clerk, are there any other speakers for this section?
Mayor Go, that was our final speaker.
Thank you. So now, Madam Clerk, would you please call the first speaker in support of map? in support of Map 2C?
Mayor Go, I have not received any speaker cards in support of Map 2C. Mayor Go, actually, we have three speakers in favor of Map 2C. Yolanda Partida, Nayli Aguirre, Ophelia Calderon.
Turn that phone off, please. Madam Clerk, just so we can prepare for the next speaker, can you just announce that person, I think, who's in the lobby? Mr. Clegg, are they aware?
A correction, Mayor. Those wishing to speak or in favor of 5B, not 2C. If there are, but I understand there may be one member of the audience that is wishing to speak in favor of Map 2C.
Is there anyone, Madam Clerk, or... Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of Map 2C? Just raise your hand, please. All right, seeing none. Madam Clerk, would you please now call the speakers for the next section? We're moving now to Map 5B. And now, Madam Clerk, would you please call the first speaker in opposition to Map 5B? Do we have any?
Mayor Go, I have not received any speaker cards in opposition to Map 5B.
Thank you. And so now, we will move on to those in support of Map 5B. And would you call the first speaker, please? And let's just make sure, for those of you who are standing there, would you stand in the lobby, please, until your name is called? Okay. And we're just going to take a two-minute break here before we move on. But I would suggest that unless you really have to get up, please remain in your seats so we don't lose that. We'll be right... All right, we are ready to start now. And now, Madam Clerk? Madam Clerk, would you please call the next speaker?
Mayor Go, we have received 20 speaker cards in favor of Map 5B. The first public speaker, Jeff Heinley. Following that, Raji Brar. And following that, Rick Jaj.
Welcome, Mr. Heinley. Please raise the microphone.
Honorable mayor, council, staff. What a beautiful audience I have behind me. I came to speak in favor of 5B, I think for obvious reasons. But one of the reasons that came to mind while I was sitting with my daughter, who's right there and hates that I point her out because I'm her dad and I like to embarrass her. She's taking a class at BC. It's a political science class. So a lot of the conversations we're having around the House these days are about district maps. Really kind of a strange coincidence. And a term that she brought to my attention was called descriptive representation. A term that I was unfamiliar with, actually. And so I had to go to the oracle of Google to figure out what descriptive representation means. And what it means is that a community, like the Punjabi community, for example, that's behind me today, has representation that coincides with their values, their community, their religious beliefs. It's very descriptive and succinct. And with 5B, even though it's a compromise from Unity, the Unity map, it still meets the definition of what my daughter is learning in college to give her critical thinking skills to make fair and equitable decisions when she settles down in a community. And I think if we don't have that, then we do a disservice to not only our Latino communities and our African-American communities and our Punjabi communities and our Asian communities.
Thank you, Mr. Heinley. Your time is up.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Raji Brar, followed by Rick Jaj, followed by Harjit Singh.
Welcome. Please lower the mic.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Mayor Go, council members. Medisas sangatnum, vayugul jikakalsa. My name is Raji Brar, and I'm here to speak with you tonight, not only as the co-founder of the Bakersfield Sikh Women's Association, but as a first-generation Sikh American. And more importantly, as a mother of Sikh American children who are here with me tonight. I'm here tonight to ask you all to adopt Map 5B. We at the Bakersfield Sikh Women's Association have been inundated with calls and messages from members of the Sikh community. And what they are saying to us is this. Pota, sanu vanderna dey. Meaning, "Don't let them split us." Our community wants to remain whole. They do not want their voice cut in half. Sikh Americans came to this country in search of their American dream. And that dream didn't just consist of a home with a white picket fence, two kids, and a dog. It was much more than that. It was the love for the American democratic process. A process in which you have a say and a process in which your voice is heard. That is why our Sikh community is here tonight. That is why many of them have left work early. That is why they have not picked up loads in their trucks. That is why my mother-in-law, who calls me every time her absentee ballot comes in so we can sit down together and go over candidates and propositions, is here tonight because she sees hope. Because they see hope. Because you gave them hope. The hope that their community will have a say and the hope that their community will have a voice. As a former city council member and a three-time governor appointee, I'm keenly aware of the benefits and, more importantly, the purpose and need for redistricting, as you all are aware. Map 5B will keep the Sikh community together. And by doing so, you, our elected officials, will be able to better assess and address our culturally appropriate needs and in turn, be able to provide culturally appropriate resources in a more efficient and effective manner.
Thank you, Ms. Brar.
We ask you to please adopt Map 5B. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And now, and now, the next speaker, please.
Rick Jaj, followed by Harjit Singh, followed by Gurcharan Singh.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Go and fellow city council members. My name is Rick Judge. I'm a local business owner and employing over 500 residents here in Kern County and a first-generation Punjabi Sikh American. I'm here tonight representing the Sikh community and my steadfast support for Map 5B. I stand before you tonight to speak to you, our city council, and share with you what makes our community great: its people. This Sikh community works hard every day, a community that touches every industry you can name here in Bakersfield, from restaurants to retail, to farming, to trucking, to insurance, to the medical industry, and to the packing sheds of Grimway and Bolt House Farms. Our community works hard. Our family business is countryside corporation. We have developed multiple new businesses throughout the city of Bakersfield. We have touched every ward in this city to help bring businesses and jobs to our communities. And in doing so, we have come to realize its needs. From building medical facilities and educational centers in Ward 5 to new restaurants and retail businesses in Ward 6 and to a new ground-up shopping center in Ward 3, taking chances to invest where no one else would because we believe in the city and its people. However, we, the Sikh community, have never had the opportunity to have a united voice. Even though we work day and night to help our city thrive, tonight is the night that you can change this. You all can be champions for our community and unite all of us as one, as we deserve to be, and not separate us into multiple wards, diluting our voice. We all must learn from our past mistakes and avoid litigation that will prove costly to the city and its taxpayers, us, the citizens of Bakersfield. I implore this council to take the correct and prudent action tonight and adopt Map 5B. Keep our Sikh community whole. Do not split our voice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Judge. Next speaker, please.
Harjit Singh, followed by Gurchara Singh, followed by Sonia Johal.
Welcome. Madam Clerk?
My name is Harjit Singh, and I'm serving as a head priest in Vible Road Sikh Temple, Bakersfield. I usually communicate with more than 500 people almost every week or every day. And they all share their joys and sorrows with me. Since we do not have any city council member for our community, and I support 5B, so that the problems and the complications of my community can reach easily to the city council. So I request you all that please vote for 5B so that, and pass that map. So we are very thankful to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Singh. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Gurchara Singh, followed by Sonia Johal, followed by Bill Hungerford.
Welcome.
Good evening, mayor and city council. My name is Gurcharan Singh. I am a long-term resident of Bakersfield and president of Bakersfield Sikh Punjabi Senior Cityan Association. I am here to speak in support of Map 5B as a resident advocate for the Punjabi Sikh senior city. And I appreciate that the map keeps communities together and abides by the law. This is important to all of the US senior city who are retiring in this wonderful city. Thank you for your time and we hope for your supporting vote today. Please vote us the 5B. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Singh. Next speaker, please.
Sonia Johal, followed by Bill Hungerford, followed by Balmeet Singh.
Welcome.
Good evening, council members and my fellow community. My name is Sonia Cor Johal. I'm a lifelong resident of Bakersfield and a member of the Punjabi Sikh community. Growing up in Bakersfield, my love for the community has grown each and every day. I graduated from Independence High School in 2018, attended Bakersfield College, and I'm currently enrolled in the University of California, Santa Barbara. It's currently my final year there. And I have finals this week. But I chose to be here today because I know how important redistricting is for my community. I have had tremendous memories growing up on the southwest side of Bakersfield. Some of my fondest memories of growing up there were Stone Creek Park and going there with my grandparents and siblings. The parks around my neighborhood of Panama and Stein have allowed me to meet many friends, some who look like me, others who didn't. It allowed my grandparents to meet with friends who spoke their language, and it allowed us all to commune together in a shared space. I recently visited the park again with my family, and I was very happy to see the diversity in the park. Bakersfield is our home, and we deserve a map that keeps us united. Map 5B will determine the direction of our communities for the next 10 years. The Sikh community has grown in Bakersfield over the past 10 years and continues to do so. With this, new Punjabi-led businesses have started, more houses have been bought, and diversity has increased. The growth of our community has brought the county more money, and it's only fair that our voices be given an equal opportunity to be heard and listened to. Map 2C is going to divide the Punjabi community into four wards and disempower our voices. As you can see from today, our community is united through our shared values, rich culture, and history. We stick together. As a community, we deserve a map that gives us fair representation and is in compliance with the law. I ask council members today to do right for our community of Bakersfield and vote for Map 5B. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Johal. Next speaker, please.
Bill Hungerford, followed by Balmeet Singh, followed by Vicky Shergill.
Good evening, Mayor Go, council members. My name is Bill Hungerford. I'm a retired teacher with 37 years of service at McFarland High School. I'm here to express my support for Map 5B. I believe it is in the best interest of our city to support this map. It does a great job following the guidelines set forth by the redistricting process. It also follows the natural geographic boundaries of our city. It reduces population deviations between wards. It keeps communities of interest united. It also keeps our city out of costly litigation if the alternative map is approved. And as a taxpayer, that is a major concern of mine. I don't want my hard-earned tax dollars wasted. It also gives the Sikh community a voice and keeps them together so they can better address their cultural needs and concerns. Please adopt 5B. In closing, why would we want to divide our loving community, which, with rich family values and talents that benefit Bakersfield and Kern County? It just doesn't make sense. Thank you for your time. Please adopt 5B.
Thank you, Mr. Hungerford. Next speaker, please.
Balmeet Singh, followed by Vicky Shergill, followed by Surjit Dalawal.
Welcome, Mr. Singh.
Thank you, Mayor Go. Mayor Go, city council members. My name is Balmeet Singh. My family left Ohio more than 30 years ago in search of something. And I grew up in the multi-ethnic communities of Delano and McFarland. And 10 years ago, we moved to Bakersfield in search of that same something. And what we were in search of was a home. A home where we saw those around us represent us. And when I look at the city council today... And when I look at the city council today, I believe in my heart that all of you are sitting there today because you wish to serve the voice of the city and the voice of the community. You were compelled to serve, just like we have been compelled to speak. And the voice of the community is clear. Map Five B. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Singh. Next speaker, please.
Vicky Shergill, followed by Surjit Daliwal, followed by Chobanjit Singh.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Go and council members. My name is Vicky Shergill. I have been a resident of Bakersfield for the past 28 years, specifically east side of Bakersfield, Ward One. I am also a local nurse practitioner who has worked the last 22 years with a diverse population of Kern County. I ask that you consider the Five B map option to keep our communities united, thus providing an accurate reflection and representation of our diverse communities. Map Five B provides a population that is balanced and diverse. Diversity allows for a space that will take into account different ideas, perspective, creativity, and a varied knowledge base. Keeping the communities united will encourage civic engagement and further involvement. Thank you so much for your time. We hope you all will make the right decision for the citizens and voters of Bakersfield.
Thank you, Ms. Shergill. Next speaker, please.
Surjit Daliwal, followed by Chobanjit Singh, followed by Audrey Chavez.
Welcome, Mr. Daliwal.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and the city council and staff. Vai gurji ka khalsa, vai gurji ki fatae. My name is Surjit Daliwal, and I'm a long resident of Bakersfield and also a business owner across through the Bakersfield. And I'm here to speak in favor of Map Five B. As a business owner and a resident, I appreciate how the map keeps communities together and abide by the law. This is important for all of us taxpayers in Bakersfield. Thank you for your time, and we hope for your supporting on this Five B, and please do vote for Five B. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Daliwal. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Chobanjit Singh, followed by Audrey Chavez, followed by Ricardo Del Hoya.
Welcome, Mr. Singh.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Chobanjit Singh. I'm right here, resident in Bakersfield, and in a business right here. I here support to speak Five B one more time. From all Indian community, we support Five B. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Singh. Next speaker, please.
Audrey Chavez, followed by Ricardo Del Hoya, followed by Treco Matthews.
Welcome, Ms. Chavez.
Thank you. My name is Audrey Chavez, and my pronouns are she, her, and ella. I'm very proud to be here this evening to take part and to share my voice, and I'm so thankful to see so many people here as well. I've been, I was born and raised here in Kern County, in Bakersfield, and I wanted to be able to take part in this process. I just wanted to invite those who are rejecting Map Two C, only those who are rejecting Map Two C, to please stand if you are rejecting Map Two C. Rejecting Map Two C. Thank you. And I am asking our city council to recognize now all those who will now be seated who are asking you to adopt Five B, Jakara's Unity Map. Please be seated if you are supporting the Unity Map. The Unity Map does this. It unites us. It keeps governance fair as well as equitable. It was created by a diverse population and is widely supported by this diverse population. It was developed based on the United States Census 2020 data, a credible source. It keeps our people, our Punjabi and Black communities whole, keeps us united. That is very, very important. Why do you feel that we should support this? Well, we need to support it because, one, it will prevent costly and unnecessary lawsuits. It hasn't been that long since we've dealt with the after-effects of the maldef lawsuit, correct? Times have changed, and our populations have needs, and they need to reflect our populations. Our leadership needs to do that.
Thank you, Ms. Chavez.
Please, please adopt Five B.
Thank you, Ms. Chavez.
Thank you.
And Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor. Ricardo Del Hoya.
Go ahead and raise the mic a little bit, that might be.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, fellow council, and everyone here. Buenas tardes. So my name's Ricardo. I'm here as a proud resident of District Four, Ward Four. So thank you so much. So proud resident of District Four, Bob Smith, proud graduate of Cal State Bakersfield and a longtime resident for over 28 years here in the city of Bakersfield, since I was two years old. So I'm here today on behalf of United Domestic Workers, UDW. We represent over 7,000 home care workers in Kern County, and 4,000 of those are proud members of UDW, like Mr. Singh, Gurcharan Singh, that's here today. So we're here today to support Map Five B. We are part of the Unity Coalition, that's DHF, the Central Labor Council, and United Domestic Workers, SEIU 521. So we hope that this council will listen to the community, because we have a packed house today, and we hope that this doesn't happen like it did in Kern County, where they didn't listen to the Unity Coalition and they didn't follow the map that the community wanted. So we're here to please vote Five B. And as Judge Tofoya mentioned in the Bakersfield Californian, we don't want the city of Bakersfield to get sued down the line. So please, that concludes my comments. Thank you. Please vote Five B.
Thank you, Mr. Del Hoya. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please. We've run out of time, but given the importance of this, every 10 years, we have a few speakers left. We'll go ahead and have the remaining speakers speak. So Mr. Matthews.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor, distinguished members of the council, and all of those who are here tonight. Great to see you. I'm here to share a story and two scriptures for why I am supporting Map Five B. My 99-year-old grandfather, Albert Desmond Matthews, served in the US Army, fought for human rights and freedoms in World War II. He was devastated to learn that his voice still did not count the same level as other residents when he returned home from war. He fought the next 20 years, along with other leaders of the civil rights movement, to earn the right to vote, to have his voice matter in a tangible, meaningful way. As a social pastor, I'm proud to continue the legacy of work that my grandfather started many years ago. Proverbs 31:8 and 9 say this, "Speak up for those who cannot speak for themselves, for the rights of all who are destitute. Speak up, judge fairly, defend the rights of the poor and needy." This verse affirms an enduring truth. God Himself gives voice to humans. He expects us to honor that voice at maximum levels. Similarly, the words of the Declaration of Independence echo this truth when we recite, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men, all people, are created equal," further affirming the equal value of human voice. Too often, we're the ones that say one voice matters where it's more meaningful than another. There is only one map that gives broadest, most meaningful voice to Bakersfield's communities of color, the Unity Map, Map Five B. A vote for that map not only fulfills the legal requirements of the city, but it also fulfills the ethical mandate we have to maximize the voices of those who have been historically not been heard. I implore you, speak up today for those who have no meaningful voice or vote. Choose Map Five B. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Next speaker, please.
Cecilia Delgado, followed by Martha Chocoteco, followed by Ofelia Calderon.
Welcome. Please lower the microphone, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Cecilia Delgado. I am here on behalf of my friends, my neighbors, my vecinas, my comadres, everyone who was unable to be here. And I am a resident of the city of Bakersfield. I'm here to ask you to adopt Map Five B, as this map best keeps together communities of interest. Therefore, it is the right map for everyone here in Bakersfield. I trust that you will reject my Map Two C. Thank you and have a good day.
Thank you, Ms. Delgado. Next speaker, please.
Martha Chocoteco, followed by Ofelia Calderon, followed by Yolanda Partita and Nayli Aguirre.
Okay, welcome.
Solo un momento, ariita viene.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Martha Chocoteco. Estoy representando aquí a la comunidad. Soy miembro de las Dolores Huerta, y estoy aquí para que, pedirles que tomen una decisión correcta sobre la 5B. Que necesitamos más seguridad en las escuelas, por un Bakersfield mejor, y también por mi barrio, que tengo 20 años viviendo ahí, y no tengo luz en la calle, y no tengo banqueta. En 20 años no he mirado ni una mejora, entonces es mi oportunidad en esta noche de pedirles que tomen una decisión correcta en la 5B.
Good evening. My name is Martha Chocolateco, and I am representing the community. I am a member of the Dolores Huerta Foundation, and I am here to make sure that you take the correct decision on Five B, because we need more safety in the schools, for a better Bakersfield, and also for my neighborhood. I've been living in my neighborhood for 20 years, and I don't have street lighting and I don't have sidewalks. And in 20 years, I have not seen an improvement, so this is my opportunity tonight to ask that you make the right decision, to make the right decision on Five B. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Ofelia Calderon, followed by Yolanda Partita, followed by...
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Ofelia Calderon, y estoy aquí para apoyar el mapa 5B.
Good evening. My name is Ofelia Calderon, and I am here in support of Map Five B. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Calderon. Next speaker, please.
Yolanda Partita, followed by Nayli Aguirre, followed by Jason Wharton.
Hola, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Yolanda Partita. Apoyo el mapa cinco porque nuestra comunidad va a estar unida. Gracias.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Yolanda Partita, and I support Map Five B because this will keep our community united. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Partita. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Nayli Aguirre, followed by Jason Wharton.
Hola, buenas noches, señores del jurado y público que nos acompaña esta noche. Mi nombre es Nayli Aguirre, soy un residente de Bakersfield, y apoyo el mapa 5B porque es un mapa justo con nuestras comunidades. Espero que nos apoyen. Muchas gracias por escucharnos esta noche. Espero y pasen muy buenas noches.
Good evening, council members and our public here tonight. My name is Nayli Aguirre, and I am a resident here in Bakersfield, and I am in favor of Map Five B because it is a just map with our communities, and I hope that you support us. Thank you so much for hearing us tonight. I hope that you have a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Aguirre. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Good evening.
Welcome. Please raise the microphone.
My name is Jason Wharton. I've been a part of Bakersfield residents for the past 20 years. Half of that time was in the southwest, in the area of Indian and the Sikh residents. Esteemed Mayor Karen Ghah and Argo and Bakersfield City Council members, I ask you to adopt Map Five B or the March Fourth Jakar Unity Map, and above all else, to reject Map Two C. Mayor Go, I see your dedication to underserved communities rooted in your upbringing and values as a child of missionaries born in India. I am also reading in the paper that you played key roles in Kern County's redistricting in 2011 with disastrous consequences. If you are called to vote in this redistricting decision, I ask you to vote in alignment with your roots, your values, your sworn duty to uphold the Constitution and serve all Bakersfield residents. This is your chance to be the true leader for all of us, to choose the path not taken by the county in 2011, and to avoid catastrophic loss to taxpayers' dollars and to the credibility. Bakersfield regional and national reputation are at stake, and all eyes are on this hearing this evening. Please vote to adopt either Five B or the March Fourth Jakar Unity Map. Reject Map Two C. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wharton. Madam Clerk, are there any other speakers for this section?
Mayor Go, that was our final speaker.
Thank you. So at this time, I'll close the public hearing and return it to council for comment and action. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to just thank everyone who's here today for being here tonight. I want to thank all those who attended our various public meetings, workshops, and all those who have sent letters, emails, who have written community voice pieces, those who have called us, who have texted us, who have communicated with us throughout the last few months. I'm very proud of this process, and I'm proud of everyone in our community tonight who has contributed to this process. We are a better community now because of all of you, because you've been a part of this. So thank you. You know, we've all spent a considerable amount of time comparing maps Two C and Five B. And as I've compared and contrasted both maps, I have to tell you, I support Five B for five primary reasons. Number one, it protects an important community of interest and strengthens it, that is our Punjabi Sikh community. As we've heard and seen tonight, the strength of the Punjabi community in our greater Bakersfield community is strong, and it's an important community. And we know it's an important community because for years and years, many of us elected leaders have attended celebrations and parades and Sikh festivals and... have attended celebrations and parades and Sikh festivals and various different events in the Sikhs, Guddwaras and in the Punjabi community. The ceremonial events are nice, but action in a substantive way, in this way, is even better. So we need to remember that. Number two, this Map 5B really creates three Latino-majority Voting Rights Act wards. I've heard some arguments in this community that this map is nothing more than an interest of a vocal minority of people, but this actually cannot be further from the truth. And it's ironic because according to this last census count, the Latino population is now the majority population of Bakersfield. The Latino community is now the majority, consisting of 53% of Bakersfield. 53% is more than half. More than half of our Latino population within the community ought to have an opportunity to elect their representatives on this city council. And it really is incumbent upon us, quoting a letter that we received, really to provide Latino voters three council wards in which they have an opportunity to elect candidates of their choice. Number three, Map 5B is not one special interests mapped, but in fact, it is a product of a compromise between lots of stakeholders, many of us council members, and others throughout the community. Remember, just a few weeks ago, we had a series of maps. They were drafted through the Doris Huerta Foundation, Jakara Movement, our consultants, others throughout the community. But it was through much dialogue, important conversations, gives, giving and taking, that we were able to develop a map that was a good compromise for everyone. Now, I didn't get everything I wanted in this map. There is many neighborhoods that I've represented for six years that I care deeply about that I will no longer be representing. And that really hurts me as a public servant who spends often many nights and weekends trying to do the best for my constituents, as all of my colleagues do. But sometimes we have to make those compromises in order to move our community forward. Number four, it's not just the grassroots groups that are in support of Map 5B. If you read the letter from the Bakersfield Business Coalition, which consists of the Greater Bakersfield Chamber of Commerce, the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, the Bakersfield Association of Realtors and Kern Tax, you will see a criteria that they established of what would make a good map. Map 5B is the only map that meets all of the criteria that was established. And finally, on a few occasions, some of my colleagues on the dais have quoted our founding fathers, and I think that's appropriate. And tonight, I want to offer this quote from Thomas Jefferson, who said that government is the strongest of which every person feels themself apart. Government is the strongest of which every person feels themself apart. My colleagues, we have before us an opportunity tonight to make our city stronger than ever and the one map that makes all people feel more included. And so I'm making a motion tonight to adopt Map 5B and only Map 5B for the first reading.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Wow, what a great community we live in. It's just very inspiring to see democracy in process as we've went through this. The first map that the advocates submitted was changed by the Punjabi community, you know, and then it was adopted. They worked together. We had the Oleander, the historic Oleander community come forward a couple meetings ago and the map was changed to make downtown work for them. Councilmembers had input and the map was changed for different reasons. For them, the Chamber of Commerce, I again read their letter as a letter of support. And I too believe that we are stronger together and that this is truly a unifying process and a unifying map, so I am in favor of 5B.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I just want to layer in on top what Andre said about the chamber letter. Excuse me. So my interpretation of that letter is it leans one direction more than the other. And I also agree that with lines on a map, not everybody's necessarily going to get what they want. And there's not such a thing as a perfect map. Now, I want to talk a little bit about me, my history and my history with Ward 7. So I was an unknown out in Ward 7 eight years ago. And I ran against a Republican, I ran against a Democrat, and one was from the Punjabi community too. But I made a promise to that community, whoever they were, that I would be available. I'd be for them, I'd support them, day or night, and I believe I've kept that promise. The Wibl Temple, when it was 3 o'clock in the morning and a homeless person broke in and was bleeding all over the temple, I woke up, got the police there, we took care of it. When the temple on Stein needed a turn lane from Hosking into Stein, I took care of it. When the temple on South H just recently had a problem with their new building because the PG&E panel is stuck on a container ship somewhere out in the ocean, I contacted PG&E and we took care of it. So as I look out at this audience, I see my people, I see Ward 7. And you've always been with me and I'm not going to leave you now. I support 5B.
Thank you, Councilmember Parlier. And Councilmember Freeman now.
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to thank all of you for coming out tonight. I really do appreciate hearing all of your thoughts and especially those who talked more specifically about your community and things it meant to you, not so much the people who threatened to sue us if they don't get their way. That doesn't really hold anything with me. What I wanted to hear was your voices and how you feel about your community and your community of interest and just sort of your heartfelt reasons for why you support different maps and most of you supported 5B tonight that we heard. I think it's very important that we have the time to really think through all the issues, including what we heard tonight, some of which is new information. I mean, you've heard a lot of it, but we didn't have you speak personally and tell us how you felt. New information came in, letters from the chamber and other things today that I want... I hope I'm given the time to really think deeply about this, follow up perhaps with some of you, but with all the input we've read today and tonight, so I can think about this and hopefully make the right decision. So I'm in support of the staff recommendation to approve both of these maps and move them on to the next meeting. And I hope I'm allowed the time to think about this so I can make the best decision for all of you in our community. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Any other requests to speak? Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. How beautiful is it tonight? It is amazing to see this community come out in full support of all colors, of multi-generations, of all different parts of the community, from teachers to lawyers to advocates to parents, grandparents bringing their children. This is what democracy looks like. And it is just so beautiful to see all of you brothers and sisters here tonight. So I just want to say thank you. Thank you for taking the time. Thank you for clearing your schedule. Thank you for preparing your marks and being so professional, courteous and respectful. I think you truly are emblematic of model citizens. Model citizens that lead us forward, that inform us as leaders, as representatives of our community to make the very best decisions that we can possibly make for our great city. So I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. Specifically, I want to thank my sister Raji Barar, who actually really struck a chord inside of me, reminding me of one of the, you know, very visceral reasons why I do what I do and serve the community that I love. My great-grandmother, bless her heart, rest in peace, Madre del Buen Dia. She was a single mother of seven, was a farm worker all of her life, spoke only Spanish, tried to speak English and then her kids shot her down because she didn't have the right accent. We communicated through plain Scrabble, it was the most beautiful thing, sharing that opportunity with her. And despite spending most of her time working, providing for the family, feeding the kids, making sure they go to school, staying out of trouble, when it was election time, she brought the advisory council to the kitchen table. And that was an advisory council of seven individuals, all of her children, my five tias, my two tios. And it was their responsibility to translate all of the English into Spanish so that she could understand exactly who she was going to vote for, exactly what level of government she was voting for, and exactly who was going to represent the community that she grew up in. And I think that is the level of seriousness that each and every one of you have brought to the table today. And for that, I couldn't be more grateful. But the other thing that she fundamentally believed in is that we have shared values, that from our broad diverse backgrounds, we have shared values. And one of those values is the belief that her vote mattered, that her vote mattered. And she shared that with all of us and I so appreciate that. And I bring that up because I think Councilwoman Gray mentioned that we must be fighting. Every opportunity we get, we must be fighting for shared values. The value to... and the liberty and freedom to keep our communities together, right? To prevent them from being separated. The right to fair representation, either through elected official or at different levels of government. And the right to opportunity. I think we kind of downplay, you know, just the sheer importance of not only redistricting, but take it a step back to the census, right? This whole entire process is based on the census and all of the hard work that many advocates, frankly, in this room, you know, put forth so that we could have a good count of all of our community residents, whether citizens or not, right? These are our brothers and sisters that live right in our neighborhoods. And so I don't take this lightly. I think it's incredibly important that we get it right. I think we have tonight all the information that we need to make the right decision. So with that, I firmly believe that we should move forward with 5B.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Gray, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd want to start out tonight to just thank you for coming out and participating in the process. I have... I'm a newer council member, as you all know, and I have got... had the opportunity to get to know the Sikh community a bit, not like Chris does. But I do want to just tell you that I appreciate the hard work which you have contributed to our community, your business owners, you're out there making a difference, educators and so forth. So I want to tell you thank you for that. I also pray I talked like my council member mentioned last week, two weeks ago, about shared values. And no matter how this vote goes, we may agree and we may disagree. And to be honest with you, I disagree with the Map 5B. But it doesn't mean that I disagree with you as a group of people. It doesn't mean that you are any less than any other group of people in this community. We all have been given equality, that we're equal under our Constitution. And I want you to know that I am not against anyone and I'm not for anyone. I'm making the decision for my ward that I feel is the best decision for Ward 6 and the best decision for the community. So however this ends up, let's stay united as a community. There's too much hatred. To be honest, I saw a little bit of that tonight, not through the Punjabis, but let's put that aside and let's move forward as a community and not let this redistricting thing totally interrupt who we are here in Bakersfield, California. What I don't see in our world today is that we can't agree to disagree any longer. We're not all going to agree. So let's agree to disagree. We have votes on this council, on this dais. When we leave here, and we may totally disagree with one another, but when we leave here, the next time we see each other, Councilmember Gray, how you doing tonight? We give each other that respect. We give each other that encouragement. And that's what we need to do as a city. We need to begin to encourage one another and lift each other up as the Lord would call us to do. God is real in this city of ours. He is real. And He expects us to give grace to one another. So if we agree or we don't agree, let's agree that we're going to show grace to one another, that we're not going to be a city that is threatening lawsuits and all this nonsense. Let's be a city that we can come together, work out our issues together, and the values that we share, let's lift those up and let those be our standard. That's what I would pray for and I hope for for the city of Bakersfield. So I make no apologies for my opinion. It's my opinion and I have the right to that opinion, as all of you do. So let's agree to disagree and I'll give every one of you a big old hug at the end of this thing tonight if you'll still give grace to me. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Vice Mayor, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I really do appreciate all the input, community, not just tonight, but throughout this process, how much you've been participating and sharing and in a civil discord with a few exceptions. It's been a long process and no matter what the vote is tonight or what the vote is next meeting, now is when the work starts. We're going to have to live what the decision is and make the best of it for this entire community, beyond just the people that showed up tonight or beyond other people that couldn't show up tonight. It's been a great process and it's one I'm very proud of. And I hope that we continue our passion and our devotion to ourselves and to this community. I don't know how the vote's going to turn out, but it's been a great process and I thank you for your participation.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to respond quickly to my colleague, Councilmember Gray. I appreciate what you're saying. I too hope that we can all pay each other respect and support the values of equality and civil participation and civil respect. But how can we do that if not everyone is invited to sit at the table and be part of the conversation? That is really the heart of the issue here. And this is our opportunity for us to become that more...
that more beautiful community. It is our chance to become a more prosperous community by allowing an opportunity for more of our community to engage us in a substantive way. We cannot just paper over the long history of disenfranchisement in our community. The stories that I carry from my parents and grandparents are real, and there's many stories that we can hear from people who have felt marginalized. And this is an opportunity for us in a very real way to ensure that more people throughout our community on all four corners have that access to help guide this city over the next 10 years. So, I'm going to double down on my motion and call for the vote.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Councilmember Gray, please.
Councilmember Gonzalez, I appreciate what you've said here tonight, with the exception that we haven't brought everybody to the table. And I believe that our city staff, I believe that our councilmembers have done everything that we possibly could do to bring everybody to the table. And we've heard from those that have wanted to participate. So, I wouldn't want anybody leaving here tonight to feel like the city hasn't done its job to bring everybody to the table. That I believe we've done, and that's why you all are here tonight, because you accepted the invitation to be able to participate in the process. So, I would thank you again for participating in the process, giving us an opportunity to hear from you. And when this redistricting vote is done, we still invite you to the table. This is not the last decision that we're going to be making as a community, for Pete's sakes. We do this every two weeks or twice a month. So, participate in the process. We invite you to do so. And again, I want to tell you, I appreciate how you all have presented yourselves, you have been very respectful, and those are the types of speakers that we want to hear from. We want to hear from those that really truly have the community at heart, and we will be more than willing to listen to you. So, know that you're always invited to this table at the Bakersfield City Council. We appreciate each one of you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Madam Attorney, I need a conference with you, please. I'm going to call on Councilmember Freeman, and then we're going to go to the city attorney for some clarification.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to clarify, do we currently have just one motion, and that's Councilman Arias's motion?
Councilmember Gonzalez's motion.
So, we have one motion so far?
Correct.
Yeah. And this... No, I haven't put a motion yet. Anyway, my previous remarks were, and I still hold to them, I received a lot of information from you tonight that I'd like really to think about, maybe to follow up with some of you. New information came in that I read right before the meeting from different groups in the community, the chamber, the realtors. And I would hope to just have the chance to think about that. I'm not really going to lobby any councilmembers to change their opinions on anything. I've just found that this is a very important decision. We might even reach greater consensus if we were allowed a little time to reflect on all the new stuff we heard tonight, though I still hope we might be given that ability. I'm the oldest one here, and I'll tell you, I've seldom benefited from my impatience in my life. So, I'd hope we could... I would move that we, staff's recommendation, that we pass both, this is, I guess, the first reading, is that correct, of both maps and move them on for a final vote in two weeks, when at least I've had time to really reflect deeply on this, try to make the right decision. So, that'd be my motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. And Madam City Attorney, would you like to make a clarification, please?
Yes, Honorable Mayor and Council. So, Councilmember Freeman's motion is the last motion, so his motion goes first. And depending on what happens, we will see if we move on to Councilmember Gonzalez's motion.
Thank you. And Councilmember Smith, do you have another comment?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I thought Councilmember Gonzalez called the motion and that the vote should have been taken when he did that.
It's the last motion that goes first.
But...
Mayor, Councilmember Smith, excuse me. But when Councilmember Gonzalez called that motion, what we should have done is taken a two-thirds vote in order to stop the debate. We did not do that. And so, again, I would back up my colleague that Councilmember Freeman's motion came last. We should vote on it. If that motion fails, then we will go to Councilmember Gonzalez's motion, and in the future, we'll need to advise the chair that you need to take a two-thirds vote to stop all comments after that.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry. Oh.
Mayor, I did call the question.
Sorry, it's too late. I saw that she had buzzed in just before you had done that. Okay, so, we currently have two motions. The second motion goes first. And so, we have Councilmember Freeman's motion. Please cast your votes.
Motion fails with Councilmembers Arias, Gonzalez, Smith, and Parlier voting no.
Thank you. And now, Madam City Attorney, you wanted to make a clarification on Councilmember Gonzalez's motion.
It's no longer needed, Mayor.
Now, it's no longer needed. Councilmember Gonzalez's motion now is up for a vote. Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved with Vice Mayor Weir voting no.
I know you're very happy and passionate, but thank you for being so respectful. And so, that is the end of that section. We still have more business. You need to read it. Go ahead.
Motion is approved with Vice Mayor Weir and Councilmember Gray voting no, and with Councilmember Freeman abstaining.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. And so, now, that brings the end to that section. We have further business tonight. I don't know whether all of you would like to stay, but this probably would be the time where you can exit if you don't wish to stay for the next section. And we'll take a break.